Planning Board, a meeting for the town of Newbury. My name is Pete Pecos. To my left is...
Larry Murphy.
What did I?
Leslie Matthews.
Mary Stone.
Martha Taylor, Town Planner.
All right. Tonight, we're going to have a few appearances and then our remaining business. So, I think our first appearance that I have Martha is for Jeffrey Hoffman, Millennium Engineering, submission of an A&R plan for lot line changes of eighty-eight and ninety, Middle Road, assessors map thirty-seven lots nine, ten, owner applicant Kathleen and Stephen Calafant.
Yes, and Chris York is actually here because he's also speaking for the next one.
All right, Chris, so you're Jeff.
I'm Jeff tonight.
All right, welcome, Chris, Jeff.
All right. I've got some paperwork, you want me to bring that up?
Yep, over to Martha. Sure.
Okay. There we are, it's okay, cool.
All right. The floor is yours.
All right. So, this is a proposed lot line adjustment, A&R plan at eighty-eight and ninety, Middle Road. It is map R thirty-seven lot nine and lot ten. The owners own both eighty-eight and ninety, and currently eighty-eight, which is proposed lot two, which is map thirty-seven lot ten is in non-compliance. It's a hundred and twenty by a hundred and twenty built lot. So, it's short on frontage and short on area. Just the intent on this is just to take the two properties they own and make them both compliant. Lot one will be one point two acres, lot two will be eleven point four acres. Currently, right now, the lot is just a square, which is lot ten. And lot nine just wraps all the ways around it, all the ways over here as well. So, it's kind of almost just kind of flip-flopping them. So, the new proposal, lot one will be over here on the left, and then lot two will be the remainder over here. So, they'll both have their appropriate round of frontage, lot area, and they'll all comply with zoning after this is all said and done.
And also the required contiguous upland.
Yes.
So, the structure that's currently on proposed lot two was grandfathered, does that...
That I don't know, I am assuming so. It's certainly, it's been there for a long time, as far as I know. Almost looks like it's been carved off at some point, you know, being a perfect hundred and twenty by a hundred and twenty square. But, I guess the intent is they want to sell one of the properties, so they want ultimately have both lots to be in compliance.
And is that correct, that that's Downfall Road to the north there?
Yep.
Because if you look at your insert, it says it's Adams Lane.
Adams Lane is to the right, I think, and Downfall Road goes to the left. So, the Adams, I think, should just be where Lane is. Is that right, Martha?
Oh, actually, yeah.
Does Adams Lane continue onto Downfall Road?
Right, it didn't actually, Adams...
Oh, yeah, yeah, it does go on the other side, it shouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, Adams, I think Downfall once did go all the way down, and I didn't catch that on the insert, but...
Because Downfall does continue, it's just a trail now, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, yeah.
It's not passable, but it's a paper road, basically.
It's a woods road, yeah.
Yeah, it's how people used to get to church, actually, from Old Town.
Kind of like Sled Road.
So, I think actually we're... Yeah, I think it's Downfall on one side and Adams on the other of Middle Road.
So, Adams should be actually on top of Lane.
Oh, I see, okay.
Are we going to have to do anything with correcting that?
You know, I'm not sure for the locust map that it's really a critical thing.
Good pickup, Larry, thank you. Does anyone else from the board have any questions or concerns? Martha, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, I've reviewed the plan. We've had some back and forth, and the corrections that I noted have been picked up. There was some additional information that I requested that's been included.
Okay. So, it looks pretty good.
So, I think, I think it's in order. Just a note on the contiguous upland, or the upland and wetland.
Yes.
The portion on the left-hand side was delineated. The portion that's on the far right, which is the larger portion, was not, it's taken off of GIS, but for the purposes of this, this plan, it has more than enough contiguous upland, and it's not affecting any structures or any access, so I felt that that was adequate.
And behind, we have Green Belt.
Yeah, it's the Hans Morris property that wraps around there.
Does anyone have any questions, concerns, thoughts?
Oh, yeah, at this point, just a trail, yeah.
You're good there?
I'm sorry.
You're good?
I'm good, yep.
No, it's okay, that's okay. Okay, that being the case, I think I'd entertain a motion to approve this, this A&R.
I'll move approval.
Great, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, that's pretty easy.
So, if you want to sign just the Mylar, and then you could sign this later, so they can take this with them.
Absolutely. Oh, you're pointy. Not that the signature kind of... And today is the eighth? Twenty twenty. Does everybody know that it's twenty twenty? Yes, okay, great. It says January twenty nineteen. Does this guy say twenty nineteen?
No, that one's right.
Okay, all right. Very good, very good, well, perfect. We're all set, Martha?
Yeah, I'll give you the rest.
Okay, excellent. All right. Chris York, I think you're back up to talk about a submission of a site plan review and special permit application for proposed site improvements at one thirty-one Newburyport Turnpike, assessors map thirty-six, lot twenty-four, owner Stoway Storage Newbury LLC, doing business at Newbury Self-Storage, William D. Francesco, General Partner. Hello, sir. Good to see you. It's yours.
I brought Bill with me tonight. So, you're probably all familiar with this site out here on Route one. It's a Stoway Storage, it's got eight buildings out there now. It was approved a few years ago and up and running now. He's going to propose to build eight more, well, four more, four or eight, I guess, depending on how you look at it. He's got seventy-five hundred square foot buildings out here maximum. He's going to basically double the size with the firewall in between. So, fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand eight hundred square feet, there were four of those. Same, the same exact buildings that are out here now, basically these bits, stuff like that.
So, yeah, I was just going to say, could you pop that up first?
That would be great, to pop that up, thank you.
That way, you can kind of point out on that beautiful colored photo. Yeah, all the way up, perfect, good. How would they compare in size to what you've got going on now, Bill?
Same size, they're going to be the size.
Basically, just be two of these next to each other, with the firewall in the middle.
But, yeah, so they're...
And there'll be four.
Visually, they're twice as long.
Yeah.
So, if you look at the back of the plan, you can see how long they are in relation to the existing buildings.
Here's the existing building, the last one on the end, he's going to have, you know, it'll be twice as long, there'll be four of them.
The intent is to permit all of them, build these two, and once they get filled up, build those two. I had my market study redone, and there's plenty of space. We filled up really quickly when I built the second phase, and we've been treading a lot of people away.
Martha, was there something that I remember about right behind that last building? Is there something in my history of my recollection of some gravel or something or something?
No, there's just a lot of ledge.
Yeah, there's been, that was a very bony site.
Maybe that's the part that I remember, okay.
And then beyond, beyond that, the other thing you may remember is that Bill...
Sorry about that.
Maybe I'll hold on to this one.
Okay.
Bill requested endorsement of an A&R plan, right at the corner, a two-acre lot, right at the corner of Sled Road and Boston Road.
Maybe that's what it was, okay. All right. Has this been a project in, what, two years in the making?
Many, many more than that.
Is it?
It's probably been four, four, five years now.
Time's been long.
All right, so as you may recall, the first, the first eight buildings were built in two phases.
Right.
And this one is far enough behind that, that it's just being treated as a, as a new application.
Okay.
Is that yours or ours?
This one's mine.
Needed the right twist. So, ledge-wise, what's, how are you going to be doing with that?
Well, last phase, we, we hammered for over a month.
Yeah.
This phase, we're far enough back away from the road that we can use dynamite and get it done quicker. And then what we blow up, we'll process and use on site.
But the board will have to approve that.
Sure thing, sure thing.
So, there'll be conditions.
And is there a retention pond to the left that will be...
Yes, same type of constructed wetland that's out there now.
Okay, all right. And the same sort of an elevation, because that drops down on that north side, right?
I think we're at lot one twelve, finished floor.
Yeah, the finished floors are pretty much the same throughout. There'll be a wall along the parking lot here, wanted to be set down a little bit.
One of the things we're doing a little differently is every fifty feet of building, we're going to drop the building six inches, so that we create some drainage, because right now, it's very, very flat.
Has that been an issue?
Not been an issue, but now with the length of the buildings, it's going to be more of a concern for snow and rainwater and, you know, all the impervious surface.
It reduces the amount of catch basins we need out there. Basically, we're starting catch basin pretty much at the middle of the buildings, because we don't need any on this side of the site.
So, no storage?
Got one shown, another planned, all back in here. Pretty much, you know, in here. We've got plenty of room for snow storage.
Questions from the board?
I don't think so. I mean, right now, it's just a question of accepting the application, isn't it?
Right, right, and if the board accepts the, the applications and setting the public hearing date.
I mean, we could ask a lot of questions, but I don't know if that's drilling too deep for our purposes.
Yeah, I mean, generally, it's best to get the overview and then drill once the public hearing opens, the discussion really should happen in that forum.
Sure.
So, they are requesting a few waivers. Chris, I don't know if you want to go over those right now, and...
I can. One is for landscaping, we're not proposing any landscaping out back here, don't really any need to, we got all the landscaping out front from the first phase. I know the sign, I'm not sure if that's a waiver or not, but I put it on the plan. Don't need another sign, so it's, it's a waiver, we'll ask for it. Trees over eight inch in caliber, we're asking for a waiver on that. We're showing a proposed and existing tree line. Figure it's, I don't see the need to gulkate every single tree that's eight inches or greater out there. I think once, once we're approved, you know, we have soap fence that we'll have staked out that, that works as the minimum clearing, so we make sure we won't clear any more than we show on the plan now. And an impact assessment, we're asking for a waiver on that as well.
Any other fly-by, flyover questions? No? Okay. That being the case, I would entertain a motion to accept the application, right?
Make a motion to accept the application?
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Wonderful. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
And then setting a public hearing date. So, since it requires, because of the notice requirements, we would be looking at a month from now, which would be February fifth. We do have a public hearing that night, and a continued golf center public hearing at seven fifteen. So, if we do it that night, it would have to be after that.
Bill, do you still have a book to read when you come to meetings?
Yes, I'll read one.
Okay, if we do it that night, I think you'd need a book.
Maybe.
Quite honestly, because it might be a lengthy discussion that night.
Warren Peace.
As long as you're aware of that, or we could go to the nineteenth. It's your call.
I think the fifth is fine.
Okay.
So...
Comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean, depending on how the conversation goes, we could set it for seven forty-five and just note it and say that we'll get to it when the other one is over, rather than...
Okay.
Yeah, that would make sense.
All right, I would accept a motion to set...
February, I moved that we set the public hearing for February fifth at seven forty-five PM.
Great.
Second.
Wonderful, discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And thank Jeff.
Yeah, just over there, it'll be fine.
Ten plans, seven by seventeens, lots one inheritance and stuff.
Okay. Checks for the fees.
I already gave you two checks. When I submitted stuff in December, he still wished it to twenty fifty dollar.
Okay.
I haven't paid that yet.
Okay, I'll have to, I'll, I'll have to check back.
I'll get you the check numbers, I'll stop by tomorrow.
Okay, all right, okay, that's fine. Yeah, usually, we don't like to get the checks until it's actually formally submitted at the meeting, but... Little bit.
That will be good.
Uh, that one is all set.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good evening. All right, next on our agenda is Mark DePiero, DePiero LLC, continued informal discussion regarding yield plan for potential OSRD at one oh five High Road, assessors map R forty-eight, lot forty-nine, owner Sandra and Arthur Snasas. Hello. How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Great.
While they're setting up, I'm going to hand out Catherine O'Brien Butter is here, and she has prepared these, some of them have your names on them, some of them do not. This is George's, which I'll give to you.
Okay. For you? I have one right here, good, yes. I am good.
Discussion may be for another time.
Hello.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is William Buckley. I'm a planning and development consultant here on behalf of the property owners at one oh five High Road, Arthur and Sandra Costonas, as well as Mark DePiero and DePiero Homes. And I am here tonight with, with Steve Sawyer, who I think the board is familiar with, from Design Consultants, Inc. And we're here, we just, I'll begin by thanking you for the opportunity to, to be in front of you again, to present, to present what is our, our draft plan of a yield plan for a potential project at one oh five High Road, as well as we're hoping to even give you a sneak peek at what a potential OSRD might look like at this site after some, after some discussion on the yield plan. It's my, it's my understanding that the board is pretty familiar with this site. I think there's, prior to Steve and, and my involvement in this, there were a series of meetings with the board that I think there were many variations of a potential yield plan that went back and forth, and, and it's, it's also our understanding that there were some concerns raised by the board with those, with those plans. So, hopefully, what you're going to see tonight is something that looks maybe slightly different, actually, maybe significantly different than some of those, those prior plans. We've attempted to take a step back and see, seek opportunities in the plan to, to try to address the board's concerns. We understand there were some public safety concerns with prior versions of the plan, and we know that, that that was important to the board. We do want to present a revised yield plan that we think addresses those concerns, and we think it's a plan that, that actually, that meets your zoning and subdivision regulations as a, as a ten-unit plan that, that can be considered in the OSRD as a follow-up with an OSRD plan and an OSRD application. It's our goal, and it has been, and Steve and I have been working, working together on this for several weeks now, and, and, you know, it's our goal to design a project that, that not only meets your zoning and subdivision rules and regulations, but is, you know, is a project that I think that you as a planning board have come to expect as a level of quality in, in the, in the town of Newbury, and also a project that I think we can feel proud of, the board can feel proud of, and something the town can feel proud of in the community. So, it's, I guess, without further ado, I'd invite Steve to come up and just give you at least an overview of the, of the yield plan that's in front of you. As I, as I mentioned, it's a, it's showing, it's a ten-unit plan showing five duplex lots at one oh five High Road, and, and we can open it up for further discussion.
Good evening, Steve Sawyer with Design Consultants. So, Mark asked me to get involved with this project. I think there was some issues with the, some concerns with the previous yield plan. It was a shorter cul-de-sac with line, with frontage and very narrow splines, with, in particular, there were two lots in the rear that included a wetland crossing. So, what we looked to do is that, okay, let's simplify this, let's take any additional conservation permitting out of the mix, let's just keep, basically, keep it simple and not utilize that area beyond the wetland for the yield plan whatsoever. So, what we did is we lengthened the road a little bit, we're still less than the five hundred feet, the five hundred feet maximum length, so there's no waiver required for the roadway. It meets the width, roadway width, right-of-way width, curvature, and also the hammerhead or the cul-de-sac diameter. So, this is fully compliant with the subdivision regulations. Now, what we've done is we've created five duplex lots. One thing what we did is we pulled, we pushed the, pushed the cul-de-sac a little further rear, so it allows the opportunity for two homes basically fronting on the street here, and then we have one lot that fronts on the cul-de-sac, and then we do have two pork chop, pork chop type lots that have full frontage, one with a, it's about a three hundred foot driveway, and the other one, the rear lot, which is still on the high roadside of the wetland, it's, what's that driveway like? It's about eight hundred feet long or so. So, the other important item is the Mass Fire Code requires any, I think, any buildings more than two hundred and fifty feet from right-of-way for a twenty-foot wide access, paved access. So, both of these lots, we have ample space for twenty-foot wide driveways for the entire length to get back to the residence. So, it is our opinion that this, you know, this is a fully, this is a fully compliant plan, yield plan, meets the regulations, the zoning regulations, and the lots are conforming, the roadway's conforming, there's no additional permitting required to get to the rear lot, rear lots. We wouldn't have to go to conservation to permit the, any lots in the rear of the property, which I think simplifies and it, it's easier to grasp the yield plan as basically a real yield plan. And this is something that, you know, I think that other one, would somebody really want to build it with the serpentine roads running all to the back? This is something that you'd actually, you know, I think you could consider and actually build a yield plan. Sometimes yield plans are just, you know, you just do it to get your maximum building unit count, where this is actually a plan I think somebody would entertain building it. The other item I've provided, which isn't required in the zoning, but other towns ask for it, is, you know, a circle. I provided a hundred-foot circle for a location of a, a building within each lot to show there's ample space. It's not a ample space to place a residence in these lots. We've also indicated locations for leach fields. I think everyone's, the soils there are quite good on that side of High Road, it's all sands. So, we've sized each of these leach fields, I believe, for a five-bedroom system, I'm sorry, they're eight bedrooms, because they're all duplexes, so they're sized for eight bedrooms. So, there's ample space for the, for the leach fields. We've also indicated the driveways, driveway cuts, and also a twenty-foot wide driveway for the two rear lots. So, you know, I think this is a, you know, I would hope that the board would accept this as a, the solid yield plan that we could move forward with a ten-unit count for an OSRD subdivision. I think at this point, I'd, we'd entertain questions on the yield plan?
Steve would just point out, so this, this parcel, which is labeled lot six, eight point four four acres, so of the total sixteen acres, or plus or minus of the, of the two lots together, total of sixteen acres, that is like six point four one and ten, right? It's, the yield plan is utilizing, just in some, in rough numbers, about half of the total sixty acres, so there's eight point four four acres of the total land area that's not even being considered in the calculation of the lot sizes for the year.
Yeah, and, and also, yes, I guess I should elaborate, on the, on the lot, the lots are called out here, we, we need the contiguous upland for each of these five lots. So, basically, the upland portion of these lots are only considered to this, from this section of the wetland forward, so it meets that, the eighty percent requirement for the contiguous upland.
Questions on the yield from the board?
Just to get it straight, the circles represent the size of the, the building?
No, it just, it represents an area, you know, a hundred-foot diameter that, an area that would be, a building could be placed.
And is there enough room on each one of these lots, once the emergency vehicle gets down, that they can turn around and go...
Oh, they, yeah, oh, these rear lots are rather large.
Even with the, like, traditional landscaping, that the emergency vehicle goes on to the property, it wouldn't have any problems?
Yeah, well, as far as for a, a, you know, actually, a two-family lot, if you, if you were to go through a definitive subdivision and create the two-family lots, the, really the only requirement is the twenty feet, the twenty feet wide access, which the fire code just dictates. They just need to get to, get to the lot. When you're, if you're pulling, you know, doing a building, pulling a building permit for a two-family lot, really, that's the only consideration. It's not like a subdivision road where you have to go and turn a vehicle around, it's just a, it's just a, well, two-family residence. But that would be up to the, you know, during the, if we were to build it, there could be, you know, a hammerhead or something at the driveway. Imagine the people who live there, they wouldn't want to back up their driveway, so they'd provide a turnaround for themselves, whether you do it for a large truck or SUV thirty truck, and it's really not required in the regulations.
Leslie, I get your concern, because being someone who has, you know, off the road, and you're worried about where your leaching field is, you don't want to turn it around on top of your leaching field. Got it, yeah. And that's where she's coming from.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, yeah, so the, the leaching fields could be placed, they're basically placed in the back corner, well away, you know, those lots are ample in size where the leach fields would be well out of any, underneath, not underneath any driveway.
Have you done any perking out there?
Yeah.
There's been soil testing done out there, and they found, basically, it's sand. I've done, I've done a house, I think, next, I've done a couple houses down in that area, and it's pretty much the same, you dig down, you get through the loam, and you're taking really good, good sand.
We actually did a sidewalk, I don't know if you were on that sidewalk? And there was beautiful sand there, and I asked, actually asked if they imported it, because it just looks like, yeah, yeah. Very surprised, yeah, it was wonderful, yeah.
It was wonderful, yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I know in that area, on the other side, actually I lived in Old Fromway for quite a while. The other side, the soil's a horrible lot, you know. Totally different soils on the other side of High Road there.
Any other questions on the yield from board members?
I don't think so. I mean, Martha, as far as, you know, it's very cursory review, but does it, as far as you're concerned, does it appear to comply with subdivision regulations?
It appears to. I mean, they've got the required area for two-family dwellings that are served by public water supply, they've got the contiguous upland, and, you know, Steve said, and Bill, they've eliminated the proposed homes that were in the back that required the wetland crossing and gotten away from the serpentine driveways.
And I guess my only other thought is, if we were to go with a strict subdivision, the lots two and four would probably be sprinkled, right, if they were built?
It would be up to the building commissioner. The two-family does not have to be sprinkled, but...
It's more the distance from the roadway, that's where I can say.
Well, I think that's where the 20-foot wide access comes in.
Yeah.
Might depend on water pressure, too. Do some pressure tests.
I understand from prior discussions, it's pretty poor at that.
Yeah, the chief has expressed concern about the water pressure in that area, so he, it might be a requirement of his as well, if this were to happen.
Just so you guys are aware of that, if we go with the yield. Okay. Any other concerns, Martha?
Not with the, not with the yield. We've had a few conversations, you know, the right-of-way is compliant, it seems like all the requirements have been met.
Great. Is there anything else you wanted to share with us tonight?
Well, I guess we can, we've been thinking about the, oh, sorry, do you really have a, it's kind of a work in progress right now.
Reverse roles here.
So I can't recall if there was any other OSIDs presented at the other, I wasn't part of that process.
Thank you.
But looking at the site, one thing is, we have the home up front. You know, the big points are, we'd be looking to retain the home up front. There'd be a 40-foot right-of-way that would hug the left side, the left or north side, we'd bend down, curve through the middle, and then hook back up with the turnaround. A development area would be pushed forward, the whole rear area, this whole rear area would be open space. Right now would be 60% upland, and if we go with a, you know, very, much larger portion. The total open spaces, actually I didn't call it the total, I just called out the upland. The upland is 60%.
It's about 70/30. Between green and purple, it's about 70/30.
And then, you know, we, this thought of providing public access, maybe a few spaces here, and then a meandering trail to the field, elevated crossing through the upland area, elevated crossing, then maybe a loop trail system here, meandering through the woods. And so there'd be a, this would be a really nice amenity that, really what the OSID strives to do is provide conservation land and passive recreation, and this would be, you know, this would be a very nice walking trail. So I think this is well-suited to the OSRD application. You know, as far as lots, we're still working through it. We do, you know, we have 10 lots from the yield. We do have a 10% bonus, so if we took the bonus, we'd go to 11, but we're still trying to figure out what fits on the site. But if you go by the regulation, the maximum we could build, taking the credit for the 10% bonus, is 60% upland, would be 11 lots. But this is, this is where we're at now. We'd refine it when we came in with the formal submission for the special permit, but this is the, you know, this is where we're heading. One thing here is, this, the offset to the right-of-way would need, we couldn't meet the, I think the OSID allows you half of that to the right-of-way. We're only at, we would be asking for, well, it's actually not a waiver. In the regulations, it's up to the board's discretion if it furthers the purpose of the ordinance or the application to reduce the required offsets. So this, we're at about five feet to the right-of-way there, but we're actually 15 feet or 14 feet to the pavement. So you have, there's a little corner of the existing building where you have 14 feet to the pavement. That's similar to what, I actually did the permitting for Willshire, for Rolfs, and there's, I think, at least one occasion where we have about 14 feet from a garage to the edge of pavement there, and it actually, it looks, there's no issue with it, it looks quite nice. So that's, that's really a little, that's the only thing where, and it's an existing structure, so we're working around the existing structure. So really, that's the only item where, okay, we can't meet the exactly 50%, but it's something that is granted on a number of OSIDs I've done. In certain cases, it's granted, granted there. One thing we would do, as you note now, the drive, the garage is off the side, we'd have to re, the garage would have to be reconfigured to have it end-loaded because you couldn't have, one thing, you couldn't have 14 feet because the car, if you tried to park in front of your garage, the back, yeah, the back of the car. So we'd have to flip the driveway or flip the garage to come off the end, so we'd have a driveway that would come in off, come and be end-loaded there. But other than that, all the other lots, we could, they conform to the, fully conform to the half of, you know, at least a minimum 50% of the required offset. So that's, you know, that's where we're heading, and we'd be, we're hoping to get submit, you know, move forward and submit the special permit with more, you know, with greater detail, lot configuration, and whatever, you know, and the other requirements of the special permit application.
Any other waivers you'd be looking for? What about contiguous upland, does that mean?
Now, yeah, I've heard there's been a lot of talk about that. You know, I've, I've done quite a few OSIDs over the past years, and they're all, they're all written the same. I, actually, I read this, and I, I just don't understand. So you have, you know, Item A, open space, a minimum of 50% of the upland shall be, of the development shall be open space. So, okay. So then you go to open space, Item A, what is it, .01? It says the open space shall be contiguous, not the upland open space, the open space. So I don't know how we get from contiguous, you know, that the upland open space has to be contiguous, it just says the open space. And also, one thing regarding that is, the intent of it is for access, for people to access the open space and use the, use the open space. And this is really contiguous, it's utilized all in one contiguous upland. There'd be elevated, probably elevated walkways with through-flow decking to cross the short wetland crossing. So, you know, number one, I really don't know how we get contiguous, the upland area has to be contiguous, that's just my interpretation. I understand there was a...
Different opinion.
Different opinion from the legal, the legal on that, but I'm not sure how that came to be. But then, just beyond that, we are providing contiguous access throughout the, to all the upland. So you can access the entire upland open space area throughout this project, so I think...
The public?
Yeah, it'll be publicly accessed.
How realistic is that? Because they're going to have to go through all these people's property.
No, it's a...
It would be a road.
This is, this is going to be a 22-foot wide road, probably.
Okay.
And we'd probably provide, you know, I know, in some areas, they provide like a small gravel, like maybe three gravel spot, you know, three spaces at the end of the cul-de-sac for a car to pull in if they wanted to drive there and walk, or if people walking along High Road, they could walk down and walk through it.
Right, so there's no issue as you see it with parking? You're going to put this up to the public, and where are they going to park?
We'd provide three or four spaces at the end of the cul-de-sac. And I see it throughout Newbury, there's areas where there's open spaces, it's a small gravel.
Just curious as to how you envision it happening?
Yeah. So this one, you know, this is a little, I always involved with Willshire. This is definitely a little different with the Willshire, where this is, the open space is a little more of an amenity with this one, where, okay, it's more desirable open space to be, to utilize. So I think, you know, there should be, you know, there should be park or availability for the public to come and use it, because that's the intention of the open spaces for public use.
And it sounds like this would not be a gated type of situation.
No, this, absolutely not.
Okay.
Can I just explain on that a little bit? Because I think that that was one of the key points that, that, you know, when we were able to have some discussions with Martha on a preliminary level in anticipation of being able to present this to you, you know, it was one of the things that Martha made clear to us, is that, you know, we want that to be open to the public. We want the public to be able to enjoy it, and that's, you know, if we're going to be trying to take advantage of some of the things that OSRD allows us to do, then we have to offer the benefit as well, right? And that needs to be, there needs to be some give and take there. So, and, you know, and then the more that we started to look at it, it's how exciting this open space could potentially be, because these areas that are, albeit designated as wetlands, are, you know, very traversable as far as, you know, especially with some sort of elevated walkway, right? So it's our opinion that that even kind of enhances, it potentially enhances the experience of, you know, a passive recreation or a, you know, some type of ecological tour through this area, because you have such a mix of property back there. This is fairly densely wooded, start heading towards the water there. We should also note that a portion of the, as allowed in the OSRD, a portion of the septic...
Yeah, there'd be a common septic for this.
Common septic in part of the open space.
Yeah.
Right, as allowed, and then you have, so one of the key, one of the key things that I, one of the key takeaways was is that, yes, this will not be, you know, some off-access that's, you know, allows people to go behind properties, I mean, you're going to be able to walk down the street and enjoy this. And I, you know, I think that's going to actually maybe enhance the neighborhood itself, that there's, it's more of a community, more a part of the community than something that's not be able to enjoy by other neighbors and such.
Yeah, there's, you know, we'll look at the open space and figure out how to utilize it, you know, best utilize it. We do have an open field here, which, you know, actually I did the, in Newbury, what I did, the golf course, and what we did with that is we did different types of use. We had an open field for, a place for the kids, okay, if they want to go kick a ball around or play baseball or football, there's an open field, and then there's a tremendous area that's all walk, there's probably three-quarters or a mile of walkway just through, which is going to end up being a meadow, pollinator meadow, and also created some water features there. That was a little bit, you know, it was a disturbed site, so we actually had to create, kind of create the resource area with that one. With this, we have some really nice resource areas in the back that would definitely be a passive, you know, a passive use.
So basically, in summary, for folks that are in the audience, what's being done tonight in this informal discussion is, there's been a presentation to the board to say, we think that we have a yield plan, which would be something by right that could be developed on this site. Previously, I think the board had some concerns with what the yield plan looked like. This yield plan is very different, so I think, you know, Martha's kind of weighed in that the yield looks like that probably, you know, would work. That being the case, then that opens up your avenue, as you're coming forward to us tonight to say, we have a potential OSRD, and we might want to file, you know, an application for that. So whatever avenue you'd like to go, I'd encourage you to, you know, to submit at this time, because this is a different, the yield is a very different configuration, and it's a different discussion.
Yeah.
With that said, are there any other kind of opening or just general comments from the board? Because this is not, this is not an application, just basically informational, okay? Is there anyone from the audience that would just like to speak on this? And keep in mind, this is a very informal discussion, there's nothing on the, before the board to vote on, we're just kind of taking information. So if you want to give information at this point, or if you want to wait till an application is actually filed, once an application is filed, then we actually open a public hearing. Once we open a public hearing, then things go on the record as to concerns and expressions, so things get, you know, more fine-tuned at that point. So today's kind of just like looking, we have two potential pictures, what might happen, and we haven't been, we haven't been directed as to which picture will be painted. So it was just kind of like, okay, option A, option B, just in terms, and then the applicant is looking to ask for some direction, and we don't have a strong opposition to the yield plan as it's presented, I don't think, Martha, right?
No, as long as it complies with the regulations, which it appears to.
Then it's up to the applicant to then decide what they want to do. They'll come back to us and they'll say, we want to do this, and then we would open it up for a public hearing, and then we would start actually, you know, listening from people, concerns, expressions, and we would go from there. So that's kind of how our process works here, just so you understand. Any questions on that?
I did hand out binders.
Yeah, there were binders that were submitted and had been passed out, thank you very much, and board members will have an opportunity to review that information. I'd encourage you to do that over the next couple of weeks. There's some very good data in there and some suggestions, yes? Do you want to say something?
Mr. Chairman, I would just say, I, we want to be sensitive to any of the concerns of neighbors and others, and if there's an opportunity to, we're happy to kind of... If there's information in those binders, which I assume is public information at this point, if that could be shared with us, we'd appreciate it, because we want to be sure that we're, you know, taking any concerns that are raised or any design parameters we should be following, make sure we take those into consideration.
Martha, you can easily facilitate that.
So I can create a PDF and get that to you.
That'd be great.
And I think this approach of collaborative discussion with the butters is very, very helpful.
We'd be thrilled to do that, actually.
Great, that's wonderful, that's wonderful. If anyone has no other questions, and if you don't have anything else?
I just want to ask, these two rectangle pieces of property where they touch, how wide is that?
About 60 feet?
Is it 60 feet? I thought it was saying six feet.
No, no, it's six, no, well, the lots, the lots are down to six feet.
Six feet wide, okay, thanks.
So six times five.
Yeah, so it's about 30.
Okay, 30 feet, all right, thank you.
Thank you for the correction, Marky, appreciate that. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to your submission.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll take a sec here. And as that's going, we're changing our stage here. I will read the financial reports for December 2019. These would be payrolls and invoices signed. First would be payroll warrants for the town planner and planning administrator. PR 20-12 for pay period ending 12/7/19. The second would be, that's okay, PR 20-13 for pay period ending 12/21/19. The second is planning board expense invoices, Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad, 12/30 of 12/19, 2019. And the third is payment for engineering review, escrow account, Justice Wacha, Newbury Golf Center site inspections, 12/30/2019. Is that all, Martha?
That's it.
Excellent. Beautiful. All right. We're almost on time, old business. Updated on proposed zoning amendments.
So a couple of things. The fire chief has been out this week through today, so I haven't had a chance to talk with him, but as Steve said tonight, actually for any dwelling that's more than 250 feet back.
Yeah, I'm just going to let them know that the microphones are back there.
Okay.
As they're talking. Leave that door, I just want to let you know we have microphones back here, so your conversation goes off. Oops.
Hot mic.
Yeah, it is a hot mic.
I hate when that happens.
We have microphones throughout this room, and the people are talking to the back of the room. We'll have that conversation going... Going live. So, back to you, Martha.
So, anyway, it appears that, uh, you know, the twenty-foot driveways for, you know, if we're going back a certain number of feet is consistent with what we were talking about the other, other day.
In our workshop.
In our workshop.
Okay.
Right, right. So, um, I am meeting with town council on Monday about a bunch of stuff, and so I thought I, I could run some of our preliminary ideas by her.
Okay.
To, you know, get her feedback on that.
Great, yeah.
Who is that?
Uh, Lisa Mead.
Okay, thank you.
Mead Tellerman and Costa.
Okay.
So mostly we work with Lisa and Brian Winner from her office.
Wow, right.
It's interesting on the yield plan that they just presented, they had that Perry circle at eighty percent, uh.
Yeah.
The circle that we had been discussing.
Right, right, which is also.
It's good to see it in play.
Yeah.
Then it shows that it fits in there.
Right.
Right, right. No, it's helpful. I mean, when I had a, a phone conference with Bill and Steve yesterday about this version of the plan, and, you know, I think the color coding helped.
Mm-hmm.
And showing those circles of the, in the developable areas was also helpful to at least visualize.
Yeah.
Right, so.
And just jumping on the workshop, folks, it was very helpful and I appreciate everybody taking time to do that.
Yeah, I thought it would, I agree.
And hopefully we can continue that sort of thing as we have projects coming that we need to go forward on. I'm sorry, Martha.
No, that's fine. That's really, I think, all I have unless anybody else has any, any follow-up thoughts on that. Oh, I do have one more thing. So, um, um, I've been in touch with David Maxim from Isotope, um, regarding the wireless communications. We're meeting tomorrow morning at ten o'clock.
Well.
Um, and Pete and Woody are gonna be there. And so we're gonna get the process kicked off. He's, he actually, he's really fast. We spoke this morning and this afternoon, he sent me an annotated copy of our wireless communications bylaw with a whole bunch of comments on it.
I was looking at it.
That's what we want.
And, yeah, no, I was very, I was very impressed. And, and when we spoke, we, he talked about things that the selectmen have to get involved in in terms of some policy decisions that they need to make and, and ways that we look about, look at, um, you know, towers versus wireless facilities, um, such as, um, you know, things on utility poles and stuff like that. So I think this is really gonna be a tremendously helpful process.
And, and, and when you have someone who knows this, who knows this industry and knows exactly what to do and how to guide a town through this discussion, that's, that's very, very valuable.
It's kind of exciting, actually, to get all that info.
Yeah, no, and it's amazing. And I was, as I said, really impressed that he turned this around and just got a couple of hours. I sent it to him this morning and.
Kinda like you, Martha.
Well, no, he's, this, he was really.
Wonderful.
So, anyway, that, that process is getting kicked, kicked off. Um, I, and I told Jeff Walker, since he's the one who was really kind of spearheading this, that I would keep him in the loop. Unfortunately, he cannot come tomorrow.
Okay.
But because the selectmen will have input on this, I think it'll be important to, to keep him and the other selectmen informed of, of how this is going and the decisions that they're gonna have to make.
All right. One thirty-nine Main Street.
Um, yeah.
Thirty-six Main Street.
Yeah, so the revision to this agenda, I, I put the one thirty-six Main Street conservation restriction back on the agenda as an item to discuss. We received the final version on Monday, which I did forward, um, and a hard copy is in your, um, in your packets tonight. But I think because there are only two members on the board right now who are actually involved in the permitting process, it might be easiest for them to, to look at it in terms of consistency with the special permit that was granted. You know, so I'm wondering, but ultimately, the board is going to need to make a recommendation to the board of selectmen to accept the conservation restriction. Uh, I was in communication with Chris Lapointe at Essex County Green Belt today, who's been instrumental in getting this drafted and working with K V, with the Asaires on this. And I spoke with K V yesterday. So I think the hope would be, and I've sent a copy of it to town council for her review as well, and I hope to talk with her on Monday about that and get her comments. So I'm not quite sure what the most expeditious way to deal with this would be, but I'm thinking perhaps if, if the other board members would feel comfortable sort of authorizing Pete and George and I to kind of get comments back to Essex County Green Belt, have them, hopefully there are no revisions because the state has already approved this version. And then bring it, bring it back to the board with the, any comments that we've had on, for approval by the whole board. So, does that seem to make sense?
Very much.
So just for clarification, correct me if I misspeak here. At the conclusion of, um, that public hearing, there's going to be a, this, this, this agreement, this conservation, uh, agreement with an agent that was hopefully gonna oversee it. So Green Belt has agreed to be that.
Right, they are, they are going to be the, the grantee, they're gonna be the holder of the conservation restriction. Um, they have been instrumental in getting it drafted. And the restriction, actually, originally they had promised, um, the property owners of the Asaires had committed to putting about sixty acres in conservation, and this agreement is actually for eighty, eighty-one acres, I think, in perpetuity, including the area where the solar array is gonna be. If the property is conveyed at any point, it would probably be, it would be to Essex County Green Belt, which isn't a butter. But right now, the, the Asaires are putting it in trust. It's in, in, in the family now and they wanna keep it that way. So it's.
So this is the last segment of that process, uh, to conclude that. And so now we're getting that, that agreement back to kind of review it because it was just kind of left as an empty box. And so now it's been filled. And this is what we'll kind of go through. But please look at it.
Yes.
And appreciate it, digest it because, I don't know if we'll, we'll ever, we will ever get another, uh, one of these again, uh, but it's good to have this, this experience with this, with this instrument that's been given to us.
There's a lot of information in that.
There is, yep, yep.
Yeah, it's a double read.
Yeah, probably more than a double read. You know, just at first glance, it, it certainly appears to be in the spirit of what was discussed at the time and meet and in some ways exceed our expectations. There are few things in there, like the agricultural improvements that were, um, might have some questions about, but I don't see that it's at all inconsistent with what, what we had discussed before.
That's good.
But if everybody's comfortable with that, we'll sort of proceed that way. I've tentatively talked, well, I've talked with Chris at Essex County tentatively about potentially getting it back before the entire board on the twenty-second, taking a vote that night to recommend it to the selectmen and then seeing if we can get it on their agenda for the following Tuesday. You know, that's in the ideal world if everything works. The way it will work is Essex County Green Belt and the Asaires sign off on it first, then the selectman would sign off on it, and the last signature is from the state. And then it gets recorded at the registry and is in effect forever.
Any questions on that from anyone?
So once it's in the registry, there can be, never be any revisions made to it.
The only revisions that could be made would have to go through, um, through the state, basically. And I think might actually need to go before the legislature as well, you know, once it's been accepted.
So.
What's the possibility of that?
Pretty slim. Very slim.
Okay, slim.
Very slim.
So this would be the working tool.
Yeah.
Am I wrong? I thought Borrego had to come back before us or something.
Um, there, well, I was gonna give an update on that. There's still several pieces floating around before they can get their building permit, which they have, um, applied for.
And it, this is not then premature?
No.
This is separate.
No, this is all, all part of it.
I understand that, but it's.
The hope actually was that they would get a lot of these ducks in a row well before because this was permitted back in May of twenty eighteen, and now all of a sudden they're applying for their permit and trying to do all of this stuff now.
And it started in twenty fifteen?
Started in, yeah, I think twenty fifteen.
It's in a five year, coming up for five years.
So, the first, first public hearing was open for fifteen months and then, uh.
Withdrawn without prejudice?
Uh, yeah, it was withdrawn without prejudice because the abudders had appealed the con com decision to, to DEP. And so while DEP was working through that process until they issued their superseding order, there was really no possibility of moving forward. So DEP issued the superseding order, they resubmitted the special permit application, and I think it took us three months to finally get through that.
Long process.
Yep.
So the other remaining pieces, I'll give this as part of my town planners' report.
We can move that, right? Because there's no new business.
Uh, there is no new business.
Perfect, town planners' report.
Unless anybody else has any new business.
Segue Larry, I like that, yeah, well. Waste no time.
Yeah.
But there are a few other things that they need to provide before, uh, the building permit can be issued. One is, uh, the tax agreement, the payment in lieu of taxes needs to be finalized. So Nate Kramer, our principal assessor, and I are meeting with Tracy and Lisa Mead on Monday to discuss that. And, um, they are going to present, um, an approval not required plan for some lot line changes, which really are, um, being done in conjunction with this conservation restriction. So they show, the proposed changes show up on, as the exhibits in the conservation restriction right now, but there were some issues with that, so it needs to be tweaked a little bit further. So that will, they're aiming to get that before us on the twenty-second as well. And they also need to submit a modification to the special permit because one of the conditions of the permit was that the backing, back panels on the pan, on the, um, arrays be gray. And they're saying that they can only provide them in white. So they're requesting.
Because of reflection?
Well, um, I did a little research on this. I think the, Borrego is saying that the, the industry standard is white because that, that's the best performance. Um, it looks like the two most common alternatives are black and white. Um, there's, the jury seems to be out on whether the darker color impacts the performance significantly. Aesthetically, it's actually better because the way the, the, um, the cells are located on the panel, there are gaps, and so you actually see the back panel coming through. So you see it not only from the underside, which isn't such a big deal, but also from the front as well. You know, consideration here is that one of the conditions was that it's supposed to be permanently, completely screened from the abutting properties forever and ever. So whether you're even gonna see them is, is a question, but they are gonna be submitting that special permit application to us also on the twen- twenty-second.
So I'm sorry, what's the special permit for?
Um, it's for, it's basically a modification to one of the conditions in the special permit regarding the color of the panel, back panels, um, the arrays themselves. And town council had advised that it needed to go through the same process as the original permit, so it's gonna require a public hearing.
Really?
Just on the issue of the color?
Just for the color?
Mm-hmm. Yikes.
Now, is that, that's not a manufacturing thing? Like, they, they only make it in white now, or they still make it black?
You know, apparently they also still make it in black.
Okay. White's more common, though, right?
I think white is probably more common.
Yeah.
But, you know, Borrego will have to make, make their case.
Yep.
And it makes, it almost makes sense because if it's black, it reflects more heat.
Yeah.
Those things are heat sensitive and depending on their location, whether they use it in certain parts of the country or where they're gonna be distributed, might affect that, so. I can see. What's in New England? We don't have to worry about that heat factor as much yet.
So those are my two major things for the, the town planners' report, just to say that these, these things are coming down the pike as well, related. I think they also owe us a bond and, and a few other things, um, before they can actually get the building permit. I did meet with their landscape architect, um, in late November and, you know, felt that what they were proposing for the screening, you know, for starters, seemed to be appropriate. They wanted to plant in early December and I actually don't think with the weather that that's happened. But I need to follow up on that. The only other thing I wanted to do is just remind everybody of a couple of dates. On, uh, the twenty-second, we have a continuation of the Seacoast Canine Public Hearing, and then our zoning workshop on the twenty-seventh at one P M. And then, now we've got two public hearings on the fifth, um, the continued golf center public hearing and.
Right, yeah. And the golf, uh, hearing will go long, is what you're surmising.
You know, um, it.
Historically.
Historically it does, although, you know, we're sort of at the.
Because of, right.
At the point, it'll be a status report from Eric and his, his team and.
Is there a way to encourage them to meet the requirements of the town?
Believe me. Believe me, we've been trying.
Yeah, in advance of starting the whole thing publicly again, so when they save themselves a lot of trouble, they just, like, it might be.
You can bring something up in the town planners' report if you'd like to.
And there are, um, without trying to violate the public hearing, um, you know, there, there continue be issues, they were, you know, directed last time to stabilize the site and do everything they need to.
Right.
And there are continuing issues. We're actually doing a site walk tomorrow.
Oh.
Damon and Pete and Doug Packer and I.
Okay.
And our engineer, Joe Swatka.
Wow, a lot going on tomorrow.
And Joe's out, Joe's out there on a regular basis.
Okay.
You know, keeping an eye on what's, what's going on. So, um.
What'd you say, the lot of aggravation, if they could just.
Joe's the engine.
Our engineer.
Town engineer.
Yeah, yeah.
What did you say, Woody?
I was just making, clarifying that Joe was a town engineer.
Joe's a walker.
Total walk, walk.
Yeah.
He's been on the site.
Right. Been on the site a lot.
Yes.
What time are you, are you all doing that?
It's kind of in flux. It might be in the afternoon around two or three-ish. I'm not sure, it's gonna be dependent, Damon's traveling, he's gonna be coming back from South Carolina.
Charlotte.
Somewhere, south, and he's flying.
South.
And so he's gonna do the Batman routine. He's gonna get in the car and zip out here, you know, within that forty-five minute window that he has or something like that.
Yeah.
Before the sun goes down. That's the plan. So that's, that, is there anything else that we have to update on the town planners' report?
Um, I don't think so at the moment. I'm sure I'll, you know, remember something as soon as we're adjourned.
Okay.
Any additional company to be invited to the site walk?
Um, so I think it's just supposed to be Damon and myself with town planner and engineer.
Right.
Because that's how we, that's how we set up the, um, the site evaluations.
Right, and it's the, you know, the two people who've been authorized by the boards to.
As a knees.
You know, to look at what's, what's going on. So, you know.
Be very interesting.
So Martha did indicate that because it's a current, a continued public hearing, there are certain things that can be discussed, you know, by this board and not by this board because we're not in public hearing.
Sure. Understood.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Sure, quick.
Seventy-eight Elm Street or?
Yeah.
I'm still waiting to, to hear back. Nothing to report right now.
All right.
All good?
We are going to be flying. Look at this, we're right on time. Eight, ten liaison reports, Board of Selectmen.
Okay, Board of Selectmen last night was continuation for 277 High Road. The board allowed, the board, the Board of Selectmen drafted a letter and sent it to the trustee and the buyer of the property to see if we could get an ex, at least a sixty-day extension so that a little bit more investigation could be done and the people that live on Cottage Road could have a little additional time to maybe come up with a solution on, you know, if we could purchase, if we can't purchase, if we have to go to town meeting. But tomorrow, actually, the clock runs out. So it was, we got, they, they had to vote that they were going to have, not take first refused. So it was, it was kind of sad. It's kind of sad. But it opened everybody's eyes to the fact that perhaps, um, there should be a committee that forms to investigate sixty-one As.
So is that something that the selectmen are thinking about doing?
Um, no, the selectmen feel as if that part of it is actually under their jurisdiction. It would be maybe more to private citizens, grassroots, maybe the Conservation and Historical Commission to formulate a group that would get together and identify what properties could be protected and which ones couldn't.
So in other words, to identify for the future?
For the future. So, you know, I guess Cottage Road and that whole thing had the opportunity, I think it was like around fifteen years ago, to preserve that area and didn't.
That's really an argument for CPA, you know?
Yeah.
Well, and that's, and three of the selectmen now, at least, have expressed very strong support for pursuing CPA again.
You should explain that to the board, CPA?
CPA, so that's the Community Preservation Act.
Right.
I mean, does everybody know?
Right.
You were, okay. So, you know, I think there's a level, level of support among them that, that hasn't really necessarily existed before. So, and I, and Bruce Tar has been working actively through the legislature to try to increase the, the fees which feed into the CPA match from the state.
Yeah, I understand the state has been delinquent in that, have they not?
Oh, really?
In funding the matching funds?
Um, yeah, and it certainly has gone down from a hundred percent to about twenty percent or something. You know, it's still twenty percent of the dollar is better than nothing. But, um, so...
They don't, I think basically, don't they realize that if we had had something in place like this before, we would have had, they would have had tools to try and save that?
I think that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly what they're...
Here we are.
Right, right, save that and other properties. And going back to what Leslie was saying before, one of the things that the Open Space Committee has done in the past is to, you know, look at all the, the sixty-one A properties to try to determine, and ones that aren't protected at all, to determine which ones really would be priority properties for protection. You know, either for, you know, habitat, wildlife value or, or other, other kinds of things.
Conservation and historical.
Right. So, um, you know, that is an exercise that needs to be done again because the last time that was done was in about 2009, so about ten years ago.
Anything else, Les?
Um, that's pretty much the bulk of the evening.
Conservation Commission, let's see, Conservation Committee met. And let's see, we had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, uh, public hearings. Towns, uh, the Fourteenth Street was basically, it'll be, it looks like it'll be continued until the 21st of January. There's a property at Sixteen Plum Island, which was approved. Six Riverfront was approved for replacement. Some of the stuff is just kind of pretty straightforward. Eight, 181 High was continued. 101 Main Street, there was, there was no negative determination. Thirty-one Boulevard, no negative determination. Thirty-five Boulevard, no negative determination. As far as certificates of compliance, all that were submitted. And one was actually for 138 Main Street that was found as part of the, going through the old records that probably goes back to nineteen seventy-eight. It had to be cleared up, and it was. And, um, everything was pretty good. And a very smooth meeting that was pretty uneventful, which was nice.
Good.
Yep. On to Z B A.
Yeah, I don't have anything to report. Their meeting in two weeks, so.
Excellent, good.
Haven't seen the agenda yet.
Perfect. And M V P C?
Um, the, uh, let's see, the next meeting is going to be on the sixteenth, next week. The search committee has completed its work and is making a recommendation, the search committee for the new executive director. And I was a member of that. We've completed our work and are making a recommendation to the commission for someone to replace the executive director, who has now started as the city manager for Portsmouth. So that recommendation will be made next Thursday and hopefully accepted.
Beautiful, that's great. And we potentially have a meeting with a representative for M V P C to do some stuff on housing?
Yes.
And do we have a date for that?
Uh, I think we're doing 2:30 on the thirteenth.
Thirty, that's Monday, next Monday.
Next Monday.
Okay. And something else just popped into my head. Oh, um, an email that you had sent out for meetings at the, the one at Holy Cross?
Uh, yeah, the CPTC conference.
Do you want to talk about that for a sec?
Um, sure, and I sent out a couple, I've sent out a couple of things.
Invites.
But the CPTC conference, Citizen Planner Training Collaborative, is really a great, great. Pete and Rachel and I went last year.
It's the one in Worcester?
It's the one in Worcester.
Looks great.
So there are, you know, registration will open in February, and there are several courses that are really geared towards new planning board members, you know, some on, you know, subdivision plans, reading subdivision plans, some on, you know, zoning. Some of these courses actually will lead toward some level of certification for the member who takes them, but also helps us with our insurance rates.
Oh, interesting.
So any course that has M I I A after it, if we provide that information to Ellen that somebody's participated in that course, that then gets sent on to our insurance company. And, and we've been getting some credit from them for participation in some of these classes.
It's a good workshop, it really is.
And it really is. And every year they have, a couple of years ago, back after the recreational marijuana law was passed, they had one workshop that had one of the members of the Cannabis Control Commission there present the regulations that they had just finished. Well, they had just finalized and promulgated. And there's always something that's relevant to, to some issue that's kind of the, the burning issue as well as, you know, update on legal decisions and just, it's a lot of really good stuff.
Yeah, so we can carpool if anybody wants to, wants to do where they wants to go. It's good, it's good.
What's the date on that again?
Uh, I think it's March twenty-first. And then there's one the Saturday before that, which I think was geared towards...
That was in Marshfield?
Um, and I don't remember where that one was.
Was that the two o'clock deadline?
That's in Marlborough.
I'm not sure I can find it now, but... And then the other one is the Mass Association of Planning Directors Lunch and Learn Thing this Friday, which Mary is actually going to go to on housing.
Unless somebody else who remembers the goal was...
You should go, you should go. Be perfect.
Oh, God, the bells on.
Excellent.
It's a great, oh, God, I love the Boston Foundation. Everything they do is so fabulous. I can't wait.
Good.
No, I appreciate the opportunity, but if somebody more senior, that would be better...
I couldn't go, so that's not an issue for me.
Oh, what a shame.
But, but anybody can go. Um, I, as a member, since I can't go, somebody can go in my place for free. But anybody else could go and thirty dollars, and that would be reimbursed anyway, so...
It's next Friday, right?
And it's this Friday.
Oh, this Friday.
Yeah.
Where is that?
They have to tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, it's at a restaurant on Boylston Street in Boston.
Near Heinz Convention Center. It's an Irish drinking establishment where we won't be drinking, but...
Oh, you, you can be if you want to be.
They have lots of fried bar food.
The last one was at...
My favorite, especially meat.
The last, yeah, right. The last one was at an Irish pub in Watertown.
Well, hey, I've got a real name. My real name's Waylon. I'm in good company.
But actually, actually, the registration closed at two today, so I, I think the window...
Thanks for the opportunity. It's fabulous.
The window has closed, but...
May I ask you a quick question?
Yeah, of course.
The insurance insurers against what?
Uh, it's our town, it's our town insurance.
Right, just in terms of the planning board?
I mean, it's for everybody, for the whole town.
In case you, somebody, you make a decision someone doesn't like, or they think it's, you were unduly influenced, or how does that work?
Well, I, you know, Larry, maybe you could answer it better than I can.
It's not specific to any board. It's just the town's insurance.
The town's insurance.
It's the, Maya stands for the acronym, is Mass, it's the inter municipal insurance something.
Have you ever had to, have, has there ever been an issue with it? Have you ever needed?
No, they're just basically an insurance company. I mean, I think, actually, I think it may even be some form of self-insurance. Where over a certain level, that, you know, they'll pick up claims and administer the claims.
I would think probably the more that you train your, your, your boards, the municipality, the more educated they are, they can better make the decision.
But I'm not sure they're even for profit. It's, you know, they specialize in insuring municipalities. And as Martha said, they have programs where you can, you know, if various employees or board members or whoever attend, then you, you get, you know, breaks in your insurance. I mean, I did it as a municipal employee. I had to go to a few of those, you know, just, H R type programs and those types of things.
That's interesting.
And every year, actually, Ellen asks us to provide a list of all of the, all of the workshops and seminars and things that we've provided. And some of them, because of the nature of, you know, the subject matter may qualify us. Ones that are specifically designated, Maya automatically do, but other ones may as well. So anything that helps cut the town's insurance premiums is a good thing.
Yeah, the theory being the better educated employee and the board members are less likely to get in a legal jam.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Credit to education.
Yeah.
All right, I don't think we have any other reports, but people came back in the room, and I don't know if you wanted to ask us something.
Um, we just wanted to know if we could get a PDF of the documents submitted.
You probably can, once, once Martha scans them.
Yeah.
And if you give Martha your contact information.
Okay, yeah.
Or you could just...
Email it. If you want to give me an email, I can email it to you.
Do you want me to give them, my book?
No, no. Okay, hold on to yours.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so we can easily, and your email is townplanner?
No, it's planningboard.
Planningboard.
At townplanner.org. So you can either email me or give me your email and all.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Somebody's going to make it. All right, in a second, beautiful.
I think we should sit for a couple of hours.
We can. Any discussion, all in favor?
Yes, aye.
Thank you.